Okay, good morning, everybody. Welcome to the Sedgwick County Board of County Commission meeting. We're glad you're joining us today, those joining us online on Facebook, YouTube, and all of you that are here in person. We're glad that you're here. As we always like to let you know that when you walked in, you could have picked up a meeting agenda packet. We always encourage you to do that, to follow along with what we're working on today from the county commission. And if you're ever interested in the supporting documents that the commission has at their disposal as we're reviewing all these items, you can always access that at sedgwickcounty.org. I want to make a couple of announcements before we call the meeting to order. Always like to recognize people that are here and joining us today. You see former Commissioner David Dennis is here today. Good to see you, sir. Former Wichita Council member Brian Fry is in the back as well. Good to see you, sir. Glad you guys are here. And it's a celebration day because one of our colleagues, it's his birthday today. Commissioner Jim Howe, happy birthday, Commissioner. We could sing "Happy Birthday," but we're on a tight schedule, so we wanted to... Did you say please don't? Okay. Couple other notes quickly. Commissioner Meitzner has a commitment. He'll be here shortly, so he'll be joining us just a few minutes. Also, there are several people that have signed up for a zoning case that we have not even been briefed on yet. And I think there might have been some confusion from the planning department on the date that this will be heard. We are going to be... It's for a PUD 2025-00014. This is something in District 5 that we haven't even been briefed on yet. Is it District 2? Okay, so District 2, so Commissioner Bluebaugh's district. Scott Wadel from the planning department is actually on his way to come over here. I know a lot of people signed up to talk in public comment. You are welcome to talk in public comment time, but we will be hearing this officially from the county commission on January the 7th. So if you wanted to wait for Scott Wadel, our planning department director, he can visit with you outside during the meeting. That way, he can give you an update on some of those things. But again, when public comment is called, you are welcome to speak, or you're welcome to wait and speak when we actually have the hearing on January the 7th. So sorry for any confusion from the planning department side of things, but we certainly want to make sure that we hear everybody's voices and make sure it's timely. So, okay. Well, let's get to work. I'll officially call this meeting to order for Wednesday, December 3rd, 2025. Madam Clerk, first item, please.
Invocation to be led by Reverend Basil Anderson, St. Michael the Archangel Orthodox Christian Church. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen. O Lord, our God, the Author of wisdom and the giver of every good and perfect gift, we humbly ask your blessing upon Sedgwick County and upon these commissioners who have been entrusted with responsibility of public service. Grant to them a spirit of prudence, integrity, and sound judgment. Enlighten their deliberations with clarity and discernment that their decisions may promote justice, safeguard peace, and advance the well-being of all who reside within this county. Bestow your grace upon all who serve the public good in Sedgwick County, our law enforcement officers, first responders, healthcare professionals, educators, and every individual dedicated to the safety and flourishing of our communities. Strength them in their duties and protect them from all harm. Instill within all of us a spirit of mutual respect, cooperation, and sincere commitment to the common welfare. May the work undertaken here today reflect the highest ideals of service and stewardship. For thou art a good God who lovest mankind, and to you belong all honor, glory, and dominion now and ever and unto ages of ages. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for
Reverend, thank you, sir. Appreciate you being here this morning. Please give our best to your congregation. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Roll call. Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Present.
Commissioner Wise.
Present.
Commissioner Howe.
Present.
Commissioner Meitzner. Chairman Beatty.
Present. Next item, please.
County announcements.
Good morning, Nicole.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Nicole Gibbs of Strategic Communications. It's that time of year again, so I'm going to invite Lieutenant J.T. Christopherson of Fire District 1 to the podium to discuss the Wichita-Sedgwick County Battle of the Badges Blood Drive.
Hey, good morning. Welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners. How are you? This is probably going to be old information for a couple of you since we kind of do this every year. Wanted to invite everybody, get the word out to Sedgwick County, the city of Wichita, about the upcoming Battle of the Badges, December 8th through the 31st. Welcome to come and donate at the Red Cross building at 707 North Main. Couple different ways. You can call the 1-800-RED-CROSS. You can get on and download their blood donor app, or you can just go to redcross.org. And those are all ways that you can schedule your appointment. Takes about 45 minutes to an hour. With holidays, travel, weather, some of those donation sites aren't able to do their planned donations. So the Red Cross really gets in a bind in the holiday season. So they really ask that local communities come out and support if they can. Also, our donation center, when you donate to our area, stays in the local area. There are rare occasions where another donation center or another region is a little low, and so you can sometimes watch and see where your blood goes. And every once in a while, it finds its way maybe into Oklahoma, maybe Nebraska. But it's pretty rare. They like to keep it pretty local. Folks still get sick. We still have car accidents, so the need is still there. And so we just want to get out in front of you guys and say, please, come. We're trying to get not only Sedgwick County Fire District, Sedgwick County government, the community, all to pitch in. The other side of this is when you go down and you donate, we would like you to vote for your favorite first responder organization, and hopefully that's the one with the fire trucks. So we're going for win number five, I believe, and I believe we're looking at 1,600 donations is what the goal is for this year.
1,600.
Appreciate you guys for your time, and...
Yeah, good. Okay, so really clear, American Red Cross, there's a definitive need for more blood and more blood supply. So special thanks to all the fire departments, Sedgwick County Fire, I think Derby Fire, they might participate as well, Wichita Fire certainly, obviously, and then EMS is involved as well.
Is involved.
And then law enforcement, sheriff and police department. And you said fire has... Is this like a winning streak, or what are we dealing with here?
I believe we're at four. We're going for another, so...
Okay. Well, we love our fire guys. I like an underdog story too, though, so I think we'll see how this thing plays out.
We'll see how it goes.
Special thanks to all of the first responders that participate to elevate the awareness. Special thanks to American Red Cross for all that they continue to do.
Appreciate that.
We'll be there to support.
Thanks.
Okay, we've got a long list of county good news today, so we're going to start with Kristin Aberley. She's from Evergy, and she's here to talk about the county's role in the Evergy Business Demand Response Program. Ma'am?
Kristin, good morning. Welcome.
Good morning. Thank you so much for having me here. I'm really excited. I'm here to present the Community Savers Award to Sedgwick County, and Andrew and Kendall are going to be accepted on the county's behalf. So thank you so much for your participation. You guys have been one of our top performers among the community institutions across our service territory, and Evergy's Demand Response Program helps us save energy on high-demand days, takes pressure off the grid, and so we really appreciate the county's partnership and look forward to working with you guys more in the future.
That's wonderful. Andrew, any comments?
Yeah, Andrew Dale, Director of Facilities, here with Kendall, viewing our facilities manager. And I'd like to thank Kristin and her team at Evergy. They really helped us and worked with us on coming up with a good plan that worked for the county, that didn't impact our services or our employees. And I'd also like to recognize Kendall because every event that we participated in, Kendall put in extra time. He put in hours after work and made sure that our buildings were up and going and everything was operational the next day. So without Kendall's involvement, we would not be standing up here today. So I'd like to thank him as well.
Yeah. Well, from Evergy's standpoint, thank you so much, and thanks for recognizing all the good people that are doing all this work. And Andrew, Kendall, thank you. The facilities department at Sedgwick County Government, you do a lot of behind-the-scenes work, and you keep a lot of these things flowing from all the assets that we have. You go all the way from the jail to the courthouse and all the things that you guys do. You're really behind the scenes, and you're behind the scenes in a big way. And to know that Evergy is recognizing your effort and seeing your contribution, it means a lot. So congratulations. Thank you again, Kristin, for this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If anybody was paying attention to Sedgwick County social, you would notice that November seemed to be the Finance Department month, and that's because they had a lot of awards and certifications. So I'm going to go through those and give them a chance to be recognized. First awards came from the 2025 Kansas Government Finance Officers Association. Sedgwick County Deputy CFO Brent Shelton received the Lifetime Achievement Award. Director of Budget Lori Ann Showalter-Ary and Principal Budget Analyst Lee McCray received the Innovation Award, and that was from the GFOA Conference in November. So they are here on the screen and also here in the crowd for you to give them shout-outs to. Next up, we want to give a shout-out to Director of Accounting Hope Hernandez. She recently earned her CPFO credential. This is through the Government Finance Officers Association, commonly referred to as GFOA. This program is designed to prepare individuals in state and local governments by enhancing fundamental skills and increasing knowledge of best practices and standards in public finance. To date, more than 800 individuals have earned their CFO/CPFO designation, and nearly 500 are currently active in the organization and public finance. And last but not least, Cassandra Sandusky was given the Women in Public Service Spark Award in November. The Spark Award from this organization recognizes rising leaders who are early... Whose early contributions show strong commitment to community impact and service excellence while inspiring others through passion and dedication. Like to take this moment to give a short round of applause for our Finance Department to continue to shine brightly.
Yeah, there's a lot of hardware that gets taken home from the Finance Department. Congratulations. There's a lot of work that's being done. We brag about the work of Finance and your stewardship. We brag about you guys frequently. These... This data may be a little bit outdated, but a year ago, we were talking about how Sedgwick County is one of only 106 counties in the entire country that has a AAA bond rating. And I believe now we are five perfect audits in a row. Is that right? Five perfect audits in a row? When I asked some of the bond council folks, I was like, what does that... And our auditor, I asked him, so what does that really mean? Put that into context. That's rare air. That's Michael Jordan status. So congratulations again. And not only do I think it's important that we acknowledge and recognize publicly the work of Finance and the stewardship you have of the public assets, but it's really cool to see other organizations recognize all the work that you guys do. So thank you. Congratulations. I want to get some pictures, if that's okay afterwards. So after we break, after we'll do... After public agenda, we'll take a break... I'm sorry, after county announcements, we're going to take a break, go out and take a picture because we want to be able to celebrate all that you guys do. So congratulations.
That's all I have for today. I'll stand for any questions.
Okay, very good. Any questions or comments for Nicole? Voila. Good stuff as usual. Thanks, Nicole. Appreciate it. Okay, as promised, I do want to take about five minutes. We want to go celebrate and take a picture real quick out in the atrium. Give us a five-minute break. We'll be right back.
We are back and we are going to keep on moving. Madam Clerk, next item.
Public Agenda.
We did have several people that signed up for Public Agenda. I spoke to each of those individuals. They had signed up to talk about a zoning case that has been deferred till January 7th. We gave them the option to be able to come and speak during public comment if they so liked, and they decided that they would just wait till January 7th. So all four of those individuals are deferring and waiting. So there is no one signed up for public comments. So we will continue on. Next item, please.
Consideration of Minutes, Item A, Regular Meeting Minutes of November 5th, 2025.
Commissioners, if you look at Items A, B, and C, all commissioners were present. These are meeting minutes for the 5th, 12th, and 19th of November. Any objections if I combine all these into one motion?
No objection.
Okay. Seeing none, I'll make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of November 5th, November 12th, and November 19th, 2025.
Second.
A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Next item, please.
New Business, Item D, Adoption of Local Emergency Operations Plan.
And here she is, Julie Stimson, welcome.
Thank you. Good morning. For the record, Julie Stimson, Director of Emergency Management. Today, I'm asking for the adoption of the resolution to adopt the Sedgwick County Local Emergency Operations Plan, or what is referred to as the LEOP. This is a plan that I shared with you during our 2-2-1 sessions last week. The plan is a product of an extensive and focused planning process that involves members of municipalities, response and recovery agencies across the entire county. The plan is the framework the county uses to prepare for, respond to, recover from, and mitigate against the impacts of disasters. This operations plan is required by KAR 56-2 and KSA 48-929 and complies with the National Incident Management System. The plan undergoes a review and approval process by the Kansas Division of Emergency Management every five years before it is taken to the commission for local adoption. Although the approval and adoption process is on a five-year cycle, our last LEOP was approved and adopted in 2022 due to extensions granted during the COVID response. That plan was originally due to be approved and adopted in 2020, and we chose not to reset our cycle, so that's why there's a short term this time around. Just to briefly describe what this plan is and how it's organized, it's in two main sections. There's a base plan, and there's 15 what we call emergency support functions, or 15 different annexes that are focused on, I guess we want to say silos, roles and responsibilities for each of our agencies that participate in disaster management. The base plan assigns general responsibility, policy, lines of authority, organizational relationships. Again, this is a county plan. The emergency support functions address specific disaster response functions such as things transportation, mass care, utilities, public works, et cetera. The ESFs, as they are called, also establish organizational roles and responsibilities. The change from the 2022 plan are minimal, but they do include reduced size. It was reduced from nearly 400 pages down to 180. My emergency planner, Jonathan Schotter, spent a lot of time to remove a lot of redundant material that was in that plan, and that made that plan much more user-friendly. And of course, the size is significantly smaller. The plan also added expanding incidents, which means managing incidences that may grow in complexity, size, or resource demands over time. That was missing kind of from the 2022 plan. The plan also addresses the differences between normal operations and declared disaster operations. And then we had one of those emergency support functions, 14, that used to be called long-term recovery. That is now revised to cross-sector business infrastructure, which focuses on coordination and collaboration with private and public partners to help stabilize communities and restore essential services. That long-term recovery section is now its own independent plan that will be coming to you next year. It'll be a whole, similar to the LEOP, on just recovery focus. Currently, we are working on two additional annexes to add to our plan, the Extreme Temperature Plan and a County Active Shooter Plan. Both of those situations kind of call for a different approach for planning, preparedness, and response. The Working Group for the Extreme Temperature Plan, we just met yesterday to make the final touches on the plan, and it will be coming to you and also the City of Wichita leadership here in the very near future. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thanks. This is great. Questions, comments? Commissioner Meitzner.
Yeah, Julie, thank, in our, in our one-on-one review of that plan, we had a discussion and we mentioned that, yes, an example you said, the weather doesn't care about jurisdictions, and we saw that with the tornado and the recent water flooding. So, and you had mentioned that some of the cities in Sedgwick County are, do not have their disaster recovery manager, or whatever you want to call it. So I think it's worth noting that we, as the commissioners, need to help support you or maybe reach out to those cities and ask, unless you've got that under control and maybe with SCAC or whoever, we need to support, encourage them to have a...
Yep. I'd be more than willing to go to SCAC. I've been to a couple of those meetings. It's been a long time, but I think that would be a great topic, especially in the new year and new focuses, absolutely. And this year, our focus for preparedness activity is going to focus on businesses, both small and corporate businesses. We're actually working with WSU on some community engagement projects and things, so hopefully this year, we're going to really go out and get to our businesses. But it's a lot. There's five of us at the county, and like you mentioned, without the city having some focal points, it makes it really challenging for us to reach the entire community.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's important, we never need you until we need you.
Yeah. My concern is recovery. We do real well with response. Our first responders are phenomenal, but the recovery process is a long time to get our communities to rebuild and get back on their feet.
Yeah, recovery includes debris, tree removal, all kinds of...
Housing, yeah. Housing is always the biggest challenge.
Utilities, yeah. So anyway, thank you for...
Appreciate it, thank you.
I want to echo what Commissioner Meitzner just said, and I do think, I know Commissioner Wise and I, we were involved in the 2-2-1 with you, and this conversation did come up as well. We talk a lot about how do we leverage the resources of one government to help assist other governments, and one of the things that we have, you acknowledge, is that in 20 cities of Sedgwick County, not every city has their own operation for emergency management. Now, we are statutorily obligated to have emergency management from the county angle. This might be a way to where, I know talking maybe to the City of Wichita or others and encouraging them to have their own emergency management chief, or at least a plan, this might also be a way that I think we should talk about come budget cycle. Is there a way that we can leverage our resource here on behalf of the cities and have a liaison? I know John does a really good job for you, and he's working on this plan, but there might be an opportunity where we can collaborate better with our 20 cities and maybe leverage what we have here on behalf of the cities with the planning. So I know this is a big lift and a heavy lift, but you know, these are also our constituents from the commission side that live in these cities. So there might be a way to leverage some of that and be able to collaborate in some of those things. As Commissioner Meitzner said, let us know how we can help in that conversation. I think SCAC might be a really appropriate way to do that, but we could leverage what we do here on behalf of the cities.
Absolutely, yeah. I can certainly do that.
Okay. Other thoughts, questions? Okay, very good. Appreciate that, Julie. Okay. We are adopting the Local Emergency Operations Plan, so I will make a motion to adopt the resolution, adopting the Sedgwick County Local Emergency Operations Plan.
Second.
A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Julie, good work on this, thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate your support, thank you.
Okay, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item E, Report of the Board of Bids and Contracts, Regular Meeting on November 20, 2025.
Hey, Joe, good to see you.
Good to see you too. Mr. Chairman and Commissioner, good morning. Joe Thomas, Purchasing Director, and the regular meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts that was held on November 20th. We have two items for you this morning. First one is the Medical Bill Review Services for Risk Management. Recommendations to accept the quote from CorVel Corporation. They're doing business as CorVel Healthcare Corporation. They're establishing contract pricing. We're utilizing the City of Wichita Contract 252-00027. Effective date was June 1st, 2025 through May 31st, 2026, and it has four one-year options to renew. Our final item is the Digital Evidence Management Software for the District Attorney's Office. This recommendation is to utilize the Sourcewell Contract 101223-AXN with Axon Enterprise in the amount of $3,077,954 and 40 cents, and that covers a period of 10 years. It starts January 1st of 2026 and will go through December 31st of 2035. If approved today, the 2026 contingency transfer to cover the expense will be presented to you all at next week's agenda.
Next week, okay, good. That's a good note, Joe, appreciate that. Any questions, comments? Commissioner Meitzner.
Yeah, Joe, thank you, and just to highlight the Axon purchase, I know that's a big number, but we, we had a presentation, and if anybody wants to know how we justified that, there's a lot of good reasons why we want to do this. And so I thank you for accelerating that purchase process on behalf of the District Attorney.
You're welcome, thank you.
Yeah, I would echo that. Obviously, Mark Bennett and his team came over and gave a presentation. We've had a couple conversations on this. It's a big deal for the District Attorney, and it will change the way they're able to operate and do their business over there. So he's elected on behalf of the citizens to do a job, and we want to make sure he has the resources to do his job that he was elected to do. So I'll be supportive of this. We have two items here, any questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, I'll make a motion to approve the recommendations of the Board of Bids and Contracts for the meeting on November 20th, 2025.
Second.
Motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thanks, Joe. Appreciate it. Okay, let's keep moving. Madam Clerk, next item.
Consent Agenda.
Hey, Tom.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioner. Tom Stoles, County Manager's Office, recommending approval of Consent Items F through P this morning, with the exception of H. I'd like to bring H back next week as a new business item.
Okay. Okay, Commissioners, we've all been briefed on the Consent Agenda. We are pulling Item H. Any questions? Okay, seeing none, I'll make a motion to approve Consent Agenda Items F through P, with the exception of Item H.
Second.
A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Okay, I want to pause the County Commission meeting, and I want to call to order the governing body of Fire District Number One, officially call the meeting to order for Wednesday, December 3rd, 2025. Madam Clerk, first item, please.
Roll call, Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Present.
Commissioner Wise.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Present.
Chairman Beatty.
Present. Next item.
Public Agenda.
No one has signed up for Public Agenda in the Fire District, so we'll keep moving. Next item, please.
Consideration of Minutes, Item A, Fire Meeting Minutes of November 5th, 2025.
Okay, Commissioners, as you can see, Items A and B, all commissioners were present for both meeting minutes of, or both meetings for November 5th and 19th. Any objections if I combine this into one motion? Okay, we're good to go. I'll make a motion to approve the Fire Meeting Minutes of November 5th and November 19th, 2025.
Second.
Motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Next item.
Consent Agenda.
Hey, Tom.
Chairman and Commissioner, Tom Stoles, County Manager's Office, again, recommending approval of Consent Item C on Fire Agenda.
Okay, Commissioners, Consent Item C, one item on the Consent Agenda. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll make a motion to approve Consent Agenda Item C.
Second.
Motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Next item.
Other.
Anything under Other for the Fire District? Okay, seeing none, we'll keep moving. Next item.
Executive Session.
We have no executive session for the Fire District today, so we'll officially adjourn the Fire District and bring us back to the County Commission meeting. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Committee Reports.
Okay, Commissioners, any committee reports you'd like to report out to the public? Okay, done, we'll keep moving. Next item.
Other.
Anything under Other? Look at us go here, all about business. Keep moving, next item, please.
Executive Session.
We do have an executive session today. Commissioner Meitzner.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session for 45 minutes until 10:20, we'll call it, 10:20 a.m., for consultation with legal counsel for the county regarding matters deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship in order to discuss a claim by Sedgwick County and a legal action that may be filed by Sedgwick County, and that the Board of County Commissioners return to this room from executive session at 10:20.
Okay, that's a motion. I'll second it. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Okay, we'll return at 10:20 a.m. See you then.
Okay, everybody, welcome back. We just returned from executive session. There is no binding action taken today in executive session. Anything else need to come before the commission? We are done. Time is 10:20. We're officially adjourned.